Yes, ma'am. Go ahead.
Go ahead, yeah.
Okay. Yes, counsel, I'd like to have entertain a motion come out of executive.
So moved.
So moved. I have a motion on the floor by second chair Reddy Wolf, second to my councilman Shackelford. Call for the question, please.
Councilman Jishwalla?
Yes.
Councilwoman Curry? Councilwoman Curry? Councilman Redhorn?
Yes.
Second chair Reddy Wolf?
Yes.
Councilman Rebar?
Yes.
Councilman Shackelford?
Oh.
Chairman Waller?
Hi.
Yes.
Councilman Big Horse?
Yeah.
Motion passes.
Thank you. We are back in session. I'd like to ask, is there any motions that comes out of executive at this time? Councilman Shackelford? You know, necessary, everyone good? I'd like to go on down to agenda. Uh, with that, I told you that the second effort was up for debate today. We're gonna move on down to the, uh, Mrs. Mushnerus, is she available?
Yeah.
Have her come in and we'll take care of it. It's over the T E D C shareholder concern. Ladies, come join us.
Thank you. Can I have that chair right there?
Yes, you just have this. But I will tell you, there's one chair in here that will dump you. We all wait and see where Kathy has put it. So you be very kind to the lady.
Okay, you guys. When are we gonna start, really?
When the P I A gets your food off our throat.
What?
When the P I A gets your food off of our throat.
I know what you do about that.
Yeah, we just don't think. I'm in favor.
Yeah? We got past.
Joseph, how are you? It's good to see you, brother. It's been a while.
Checks are going down again. They went down eight hundred last time. Our production. That's not gonna help us.
No, our production's going down. We need to do for.
Councilman Shackelford, you were talking about us doing at the next meeting after we were here to get a resolution out to promote to the Congress on this.
From France.
I didn't know if you wanted to do it today or not.
We're gonna need to go over Austin County more.
Yeah, no, just lay on that certainly would like to. Yes, sir.
I'm having a time to do for skulls.
But how long? You know, we do have a lady, you'll make sure you can. We're back in session. I have nothing now in executive. Can I go ahead and move on now to agenda with Mrs. Mushnerus? I hate to stand up, but she's behind you. Mrs. Mushnerus, would you please join us? Ladies and gentlemen, let's quiet down the chambers, please. My dear, please.
Thank you. Thank you for having me. I appreciate you putting the shareholders. I don't know why my name got on there first, but I just appreciate you having the shareholders here today because we had some things that we wanted to discuss with you.
Please continue.
I would like for Maria to speak first, if you don't mind, and we'll call her up and let her talk first.
Yes, and in the meantime, when you write an email, that's what I also wanna know is who's gonna be speaking and what is the topic, just in the future, but you go right ahead.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chairman Waller and members of the council. I think that you guys have known that shareholders have had some concerns specifically with the T E D. But, but more generally for me, what my part is and my portion to speak is to tell you that we shareholders want to support you. We view you as the government entity that protects our estate. The nation says it belongs to the nation, has to have that anger. But all the benefit of that belongs to all these people, including myself, sitting here. And we look to you to be our leadership. I wanna cover what I believe are authorities that you have in this constitution that I see have been overreached. And when that overreach occurs and when that overreach happens, it diminishes our rights as shareholders. We don't know what's going on. We see confusion here in the body. We see.
Absurd.
Confusion of some. Well, then if, but if we knew clearly what all were thinking, if there was a discussion in that confusion, wouldn't be here for us at all. And that's what we would like, like to see, but the, the constitution gives you guys every executive function of the minerals estate. It gives it to you guys. It gives it to every one of you. You guys have all the executive function of the minerals estate. Do you have executive function over any other area? No, you don't. But if things that pertain to the minerals estate, you do. The nation in this book, in Article fifteen, it tells what the nation is obligated to do is to protect us, is to protect the estate and protect us. But that next line says, in order, and people in the executive don't want you guys to know this because they, they wanna run this. But the, the document says that, that it says, it says all you're gonna do, it says the minerals estate of the Osage Reservation is reserved to the nation. That means the, that means the nation, so when they talk about the nation, they mean the people. When they talk about nation government, they need mean all the branches. But it's reserved to the nation. The government of the Osage Nation shall have the perpetual obligation to ensure and preserve the minerals estate. Uh, the government shall further ensure the rights of mineral royalty interest holders to, of Osage to set forth in the allotment act of June twenty eight, nineteen oh six, to income derived from the minerals estate are protected. The next line says, it says what they're, what you're supposed to do, what the nation's gonna do, to discharge those obligations. They discharge all those obligations. This document discharges all of those obligations the nation has. To discharge those obligations, the Osage Nation hereby creates a minerals management agency designated the Osage Minerals Council. It goes on down in the next paragraph and it says that you administer and develop the previous duties. The previous duties to administer and develop Osage Minerals Estate. Let me see, the Minerals Council recognizes the Osage Nation is an independent agency. The Osage Nation establishes sole purpose continuing the previous duties. Um, to administer and develop. That's, that's an executive function, you guys, in, as far as minerals are concerned. That is an executive function to administer and develop the Osage Minerals Estate according to the Osage allotment act of June twenty eight, nineteen oh six as amended. That act is carried out by the Code of Federal Regulation, especially as it pertains to mineral twenty five, you guys know all this, CFR, uh, two twenty six.
Right.
That what, that's what tells you guys how to function and operate for us in this estate on our behalf. If you guys are letting somebody, not letting, if somebody else is negotiating that regulation, that can regulate you guys right out of some of the functions you currently hold when this document is ready. We need for you guys to be our, to be our representatives. Also, there were some statements made that really, the first statement that jumped off a page of some documents to me is a former congressman, a former minerals council member said that they wouldn't ask permission to file for a grant. That hurts me, you guys. You guys don't have to ask permission to file for a grant from anyone. Congress can authorize you to be a tribal organization under the umbrella of the Osage Nation, and you don't have to ask permission for any grants. You guys can go do that yourself. There's just things you don't know that people aren't gonna tell you. And, and I only know about it 'cause this, I'm a geek, this is what I do. And, and. Sorry. I, I want you guys to be strong. I want you guys to be able to walk into the authority that God has given you. We have had such a blessing from this estate. And I want you guys to be able to walk into that authority. And I think everybody here wants to support you there. And so, one, one more thing, other thing that I said, um, that it says the executive will coordinate between Congress and the minerals. The executive has no function in Article fifteen except to write a letter of objection to anything you guys execute as it pertains to minerals. That's the only function the executive has in Article fifteen, is to write a letter of objection. And that doesn't really have any standing. You can agree to his objection or you can disagree. The constitution goes on to say that if that can't be resolved, it's second to the Supreme Court. Do I want for our whole government to work together and cooperate? Yes, I do. But I believe that some of your authority as council members has been overreached and overtaken by the nation. And I just want you to know that I believe, I'm speaking for people sitting behind me, I believe that we all support you guys. One more thing I wanna say about Congress is that Congress in Article fifteen, the first section of Article fifteen says Congress has general authority over, this is the legislature, has general authority over all natural resources of the Osage Nation. That does not give them the ability to execute or run, you guys, but that's who you go to is Congress. And you tell them what you wanna do, and I talked to several Congress members this week, and they all wanna support you, but you gotta get it together and take it to them. That's, that's who, that's who the constitution says has general authority over the minerals and the natural resources of the nation, not the executive branch. So, we all, several of us, I'm not, I'll speak for myself, but I believe that several of us see an overreach happening here. And I think that we're at a critical point, this is Maria's opinion, Maria's words, we're at a critical point that we can break out of that now, and it doesn't have to be openly. We can break out of that now and start exercising the authority that the Osage Nation, the authority that you guys have in this constitution. I need to say one more thing. I'm sorry, I'm all over the place. So if you don't believe what I just said about Congress being the people that you go to, the people that wrote this document knew they had a huge task trying to take a tribe that every member was a shareholder and changing it into something else. So I believe that's how, why they wrote your authorities as they did, and I believe that's why they put you under the legislature. So twelve people could be looking at things that you eight people wanted to do. It was never meant to be concentrated in one person. So, to prove, to prove my point, how I read this constitution and I've had some discussions with other people in the executive and they said, well, that's your interpretation. Yeah, I can read. That is my interpretation. That's what it says. Attorneys can twist things around to say anything they want to, and you guys know that better than anybody. I think you guys have been the most litigious people in the whole of Sage Nation, not, not at your fault, but it's just the nature.
We're the only ones fighting in federal court.
Absolutely.
You're over here jousting around in the husk. I'm trying to save your tribe.
I, I agree.
On behalf of my council.
That, that's what I'm saying. You guys, you guys know how law, but, but one more point, and then I, I'll let somebody else do whatever it is that they need to do. But if you look at Article five, and if anybody wants me to give a note to this, I will, of what I'm saying, that Article five is the.
Page twenty two.
I'm so sorry. Um, I'm way past it. Article five is the section that has separation of powers in it, and I'm not finding it. I keep going from two to seven. Article six should be right here. Declarations of rights, male legal rights, legal remedies, rights, no, I'm in the wrong section. The separation of powers or the distribution of powers of the government, there it is, right there. So if you look at that, in, in section. In section two, separation of powers. It, it tells us, the legislative, executive, and judicial branches of government shall be separate and distinct, and I think that we're supposed to be, yes, but we have a minerals council over here. Uh, shall be separate and distinct, and no person or collection of persons charged with the official duties under one of those branches shall exercise any power properly vested in either of the others. These are the words I want you to hear. Except as expressly provided in the Osage Nation Constitution. There is an exception, the writers of this constitution, you knew you guys were our fourth branch of government. And they put that exception in there for Article fifteen. And so, I hope that you can know how passionate I am about supporting you. I want to see you log on in the themes that have been delegated for the Osage Tribal Council, now the Osage Nation Minerals Council. You have every right indeed to buy this document to walk forward in that. You don't need anybody else's permission, except your shareholders. This, this document gives you that authority. And if you ever have a question, but there, you know that there are gonna be people that say, I don't know what I'm talking about, and that's okay. But I can read, and you guys can too, and plain clear reading of that, that's what this document says. And I sure wanna support you, and I thank you for the work you do. To set these seats of government is a service to your people. And I think that every one of you sitting here have something in your heart that makes you do what you do, and I appreciate that. So thank you very much.
Very helpful. Thank you, Maria. I just, I just wanna leave it there. That was very well said. My Congress is here. We, we, we have to do that. We've been doing that. I, I see some things coming up. We discussed exactly some of this because of the effort of, uh, the power installed here. We, we as a council are looking exactly that, and then we're also looking at an oath we took. That, uh, in some days, and we're not gonna get into politics of it, but I wanna thank you all for that. And it will be taken more, more than you know. And I'll leave it at that. I wanna move on down to agenda, counsel. Does anybody else have something?
May I, can I speak?
Yes, you may. As my former counsel. It's good to see you.
Thank you, and thank you for allowing me to speak. I'm Cynthia Boone, head right owner. I picked up, I got a copy of the separate, the, uh. Sovereignty codes. I hope that every one of our elected officials had had a chance to read this thoroughly and really think it over. Because as I've read it, I became really upset with it. One of the things that upset me on page four is the fact that it says, this will enable the nation to gain control over its mineral and energy assets. I sat right here this morning and I heard the chief say, he, he doesn't wanna take over the minerals. But the really words is, it's gonna enable him to. Another part on section five, it talks about how, um, the structure serving the nation's gaming enterprise, well, the project development would take guidance from other tropical countries' energy and mineral structures and structures serving the nation's gaming enterprise. In which business is carried out by the Gaming Enterprise Board and regulated by the Nation's Gaming Commission. Well, to me, that says, we're gonna use your minerals estate as collateral for the gaming. All you have to do every month is pick up our Osage Nation news and watch on the front page. Gaming is in trouble.
Thank you, and leave it at that. Thank you.
Okay, so let me just say this about that. Uh, but first of all, I'd like to have a copy of both of those resolutions that the chief was referring to this morning, 'cause I haven't seen them and I'm not, I'm not familiar with them. May I have copies of those?
Sure.
And I would like to ask each one of our elected officials that you were, or to state that you were elected to protect our assets. There's a four-letter word for what the sovereignty codes lead to, and that is risk. Please do not put our minerals at risk. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am, and thank you for your comments. Also upon request, you can have a copy of the resolutions. Did we get them on our page yet? The resolutions will be available. It's better just to call in. We'll just have you call in Chief of Staff Reynolds for any, uh, upon request, and it'll be on the two. The other comment comes is, uh, when did you get that paperwork? Is that on the last document that they sent out? What date is that sovereignty?
The sovereignty code that I have is.
Is that the old one?
Is dated May the thirteenth, twenty twenty two, and that's, that's the resolution that I think that.
Yes, I just wanted that for the record. Thank you, dear. We appreciate that about support because we're, we're getting ready to go something, somewhere. When I sat here twenty-two years ago, I had a tougher day than I'm having today. We decided to sue our trustee for two point four billion. And I didn't get all the votes that day, but I got enough that we went ahead and filed. And it was done because of the travesties done to our shareholder. And I'll just go ahead and tell you is that I've got some people around me, and I know some days it looks confused, but I know that my council's trying hard. This is my fifth one. Where I live in any year, and if it was a dictatorship, we could probably run it just a little quicker, but I don't know if we can run it better. But if I'm at the helm, it's gonna be the same. I've always been here for my shareholder. I gave up my job to be here. Ask anyone else who did. I got a termination letter on what the day I won. So I'm four hundred eighty-two thousand in rares and pay. Let's see what load you're carrying. I know what load I'm carrying. And God wills it. Let's go on with the agenda. I'd like to go into meeting minutes, item number ten. Chairman, I don't think we're done. Oh, I'm sorry, but she left my spot.
I'm on my agenda.
Yes, I'm sorry.
Thank you. Thank you.
But I would, I do know upon request of the agenda, I do wanna know who's gonna talk and so.
And I did specify.
You did. I'm just kidding, there's a future on the record.
Yes, I did specify. I want, I, again, I want to thank you for adding the shareholders on this agenda because they, they are up in arms, and a lot of it is because of this, this document. And it does say specifically, there are so many things in this document that are concerning, and it says, the nation wishes to develop the capacity, um, over their, their minerals estate, the Osage Nation's minerals, valuable assets. And it, it does go on to say that, that they want to develop their assets, and it is very concerning to the shareholders when we read things like this. And I could go on and on, but I, I don't know when you all received this. Um, I think it was about the same time that we did, and that was just recently, and this document was drafted in two.
That's why I asked. It came out with the audit report, and that's when I knew, this is the first time we've been seeing it, but you knew all the time this was the plan.
Yes, it, it was in twenty twenty-two, and, you know, when you read things that say Osage, this was, uh, the Osage sovereignty codes, uh, of energy and minerals management and operating companies. And it was drafted by the Osage Nation on behalf of the Osage Minerals Council. That, that's overreach, you know, you all are in charge of this minerals estate. We elected you to do this, to run this minerals estate for us. We entrusted you with this minerals estate, not the Osage Nation. And they're doing things like this, including their name on our assets, and we don't like that. We don't like it, and it's concerning to us. It's very concerning. This has caused me sleepless nights, and I'm sure a lot of other people, because we trust you with this, not the Osage Nation. Because this is not the first document that they have taken my assets and your assets and put their name on it and tried to peddle it to somebody else. We've had me on three, we've had other things that you're aware of, that they put their name on and tried to peddle it. So it's concerning. That's all I'm saying.
All right, I'll be right to you.
I, go ahead. Go ahead. I appreciate the, the conversation that we had this morning that we all had. I appreciate Anthony's comments very much, and Paul's explanation very much, because it saved me from asking a lot of the questions on this paper. Um, I just want you to think about, and I know you do, your shareholders and your responsibilities to serve and protect the minerals estate. And not only think about us, but think about your ancestors and what they would have you do. And that we did elect you to represent us, and we didn't elect a team behind closed doors. There's been a breakdown in communication, and there's been information that has not been brought to you or council members or, or to us. There's generally, as Congress does, they put resolutions on, online, where, where we can all see what's going on in Congress. There's, there's transparency. There's, even with financials, as, as you all brought up this morning, financials, I've asked for financials. Everybody's asked for financials. What's going on? We want to know. It's our money. We want to know. We cannot get any information, and that's concerning to us. So we would appreciate knowing what's going on. It's resolutions, and, uh, maybe think about things like that, so we don't have to be so uptight all the time. Because it causes trust issues, and certainly we have trust issues with the executive. And we want you all to be empowered because we can see how things that go on behind closed doors have caused a diminishment in your power, and we don't like that. We don't, we want you to be empowered. And we've spoken, many of us have spoken to Congress, and from what Maria has so well explained, you can write a resolution to Congress and you can get what you want by law. You can change things here in this chamber. You can. You can get what you want by writing a resolution. You can get funding, you can get what you need. Con-- that, that Constitution has set you aside to get what you need, and we want that for you. We want you to get what you need to run this council and run that minerals estate. We can get, you can get yourselves empowered to do what you need to do, and we want that for you.
I do have one comment. I'd like to talk to my congressmembers in there. And you, you heard the subject matter. This document was sent out to you also. When does it ever reflect under Congressman Buffalohead's resolution that said the nation wasn't ever going to do that? I mean, we don't have to come up here and beat our own drum. They already have legislation that should have been protecting us to begin with. And then you talk about the other, when do you take it to the Attorney General? Do you feel fit to do that? Do you understand what I'm saying? When, if we as a, as a body, I still think Congress should go ahead and help us, assist us with that, because they already had the resolutions that cover exactly what you just discussed on the impact, also on the other estate. This problem should have been took care of way before now, because your village has already been taken, the property itself. We have some other criteria that we need to protect. That's what I want to tell my congressmembers. You already had a resolution that said that couldn't happen. So you, you got it, and it was written in twenty-two, and we just got it with you? Not just for the record, dear, but I appreciate what you've said. It is, it is more on the radar than you think. It's hard to discuss in an open meeting, but I do realize that some of the criteria you're asking, it's available. Might need to spend some time getting it, but some of it's easily available, some of it is--
And if the villages have been taken, that, there was a meeting in Bracor's, and we discussed those, and those were, had to be taken in the CFRs, and those were not published as far as--
That's correct. But I can't speak as the village board member. I need to stay as the chairman. See, I, I live it day and night. I don't just come in a few times, give a speech.
We do, too.
Well, I know, but you're not sitting as chairman and handling the rest of the, the volume of calls and situations I'm taking care of with the White House, with the five congressmembers, the other-- I think you've got up a great point today, and the point is, is that there's some areas in which this council's already discussed it. Sometimes we've been a little harsh on it, and it might be confusing, but we're not trying to bite the apple, we're trying to take the apple. So if we do that, there will be some effort by my council as a, we'll go together, and they will have to have a Congress help us.
I appreciate--
And nothing will happen once we start that. The fight will be on.
I hope so.
Thank you for that. I can't answer like that.
And protect us.
Counsel.
Chairman, did Second Chair go close?
Okay, I just wanted to, and I appreciate you addressing this, just to reiterate that we were kind of, had a hen run on us. You have seen this document just recently for the first time. We haven't really, this council hasn't really seen it yet. Ms. Thomas emailed it to us a few weeks ago. We've never seen it before. The document that the chief held up, and, and says he's acting on, is an illegitimate document in my terminology. It may not be legally, but it, he's relying on an instrument that has zero transparency. It came from a single councilwoman, a former councilwoman, that the rest of the council didn't see, hadn't seen in, oh, in one year. I mean, that was May of twenty-two that you just mentioned, fifteen months ago, all right? We're just now seeing it, and we have not digested it and discussed it among ourselves. We voted to appoint a request that Councilman Chappellford and Councilwoman Curry research it and come back and tell us all about it. To this day, that hasn't occurred. There was an attempt to do so, but it hadn't happened yet. Today's meeting, we kind of addressed that issue again, and we're going to make another run at doing just that, but we've not seen it either. And we've learned through the people attending today that the Osage Nation Congress has already taken some kind of action on this very subject. And we're the Mineral Council, they keep talking about the Mineral Council and this grant application, applied for by the Mineral Council? No, we did not apply for this grant, okay? We did sign a resolution, and it was ordered differently than what it was voted on orally, and we've never seen it, and this would not be a grant that we would have anything to do with. And I'm just saying, there's one councilmember here, I appreciate what you say. I'm in the dark, and I want to get to the bottom of it, and I just, for the life of me, don't know why Congress, and two of them are sitting in this room, I don't know, at least two, maybe more, but I don't, for the life of me, know how, how Congress is over there, dealing with a grant supposedly by the Mineral Council, when there's eight of us in attendance today. We don't know anything about it, really. I couldn't, if you, if I had to take a quiz on what was in that grant, I couldn't tell you. And if, if I did read it, I probably wouldn't be able to interpret half of it, probably a bunch of legal jargon. So I'm just saying that I appreciate you coming and bringing this to our attention, and it's got me, it's got my attention. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you, sir. Second Chair Red Eagle.
Appreciate you coming, all, all the comments you've made. It really made a big difference to me. Now I know what's going on, and just like Councilman Rebar said, we didn't know anything about this, and we just thought it was another grant. There were a lot of grants that arrived, or were, I believe, at one time. I, in two thousand, over two thousand and six, I wasn't even around. I was in Tulsa working. And I made a comment to the last council when I was voting in, and I was working in Tulsa, and my brother, Big Horn, and everything that I heard about what's going on, the transfer of power and all that, I, I asked him. And the first thing I said is that there's going to be a Congress over here, there's going to be a Mineral Council over here, and Congress, the Mineral Council is under this bill over here. That's all I heard, and they didn't like it. Both my brother, they, they didn't like it. And I said, one of them even commented, saying, I don't say which one, I still got two of them left, that they made a mistake when this new government came in. There was a big mistake made. And I said, well, one of them said, there's going to be a lot of problems, confusion, big disagreements, going to be upsetness and everything, and it's all going to happen. We're experiencing that right now, confusion, disagreements, everything. What they said they should have done was create a board, maybe a three-person board or maybe even a five-person board, wrap them, and let them handle everything that has to do with minerals. Just those three or those five, and eliminate the rest of them. Then, all this right here, we're experiencing today, we wouldn't be going through this right now, I guarantee you that. And they were right. One of them was right. And I, and I didn't know anything about, much about, much about this. I wanted to retire from what I was doing, because I was laboring, getting problems, and I decided to run for Mineral Council, and I had to get on. That's when I learned about all this. My dad always told me a lot about it, and I came up to a lot of meetings when he was, when he was around, with my folks have been involved with it a long time. But that's what they told me. But it, it also, another last statement I want to make is that it involves honesty.
Yeah.
Believe, believe in honesty. Do we believe the chief? And he said, I don't want to, you all do.
No, no, no.
Do we believe that?
No, no.
I don't believe--
No, no.
There's word honesty, you know? You know, if Chairman Waller says, "I'm going to do this with the Mineral Council," I have a ten seat belief. Or Chairman Councilman Rebar says, "I can do this." And I know he knows what he's talking about, and I, and I have a ten seat to believe. But when someone comes in, he's not only the chief of our nation, he's a lawyer.
That's right.
And, and he says, "What, I'm going to do this. You all can do whatever I have to do." I believe him. That's, that's the question. All, it's on your honor, it's on your mind, and it's on my mind, too. When, when that vote comes in forever, they made all good deal, though. Anyway, I just, that's how I feel. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Councilman Redcorn.
I did, Chair, I appreciate you coming up, and all the shareholders. I do agree with you, we're looking out, we've got to be the voice of our shareholders. We talked about that in executive session, some of it doesn't sit with some folks. We've got to say it. I feel like, and I did say it in executive, through the years, the last fifteen or so years, you lost a lot of your voice. You lost a lot of your ability to communicate with the United States strictly directly. And I said that earlier, and wasn't well received, but I just want you to know. We just got to keep saying it. But I will mention MI3.
Yep.
I just want to mention, you mentioned it, we've talked about it, Mr. Stephanie, we've talked about it.
Oh, we're Bracor's, for sure.
Bracor's. I just want to say, I'm, I'm not pitching MI3, but this was ninety-three million barrels of oil they found. That's seven billion dollars in total revenue. That's one point four billion dollars for the shareholders alone. That's six hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars per head right. I would love to put that money into your pockets. So I'm going to keep pushing. We might just go to the BIA, and I told them, "MI3, you're going to do this, you're going to have to go straight into that office and get released like everybody else." And I think if we start, if we continue to act that way in this reservation, we should be, we should be moving forward. But Mr. Rebar was in that phone call, and myself, I want y'all to know, these new regs are coming out, and they're fierce, and we're fighting hard. So I want y'all to know, I, I, I don't know how more, we've got other items we want to try to grow your chair. I want to help y'all. That's what, that's my vision, is to try to get more oil out of there, just so we can just put money in your, you know, in your bank account. So if I, and if I did something that apologized, you know, I want to keep going, something that'll make y'all happy, make the BIA happy, let's keep moving with these things and get more revenue into your pocket. And that, I know the last question I had earlier was, what's, of all this that we do, is it going to strengthen the trust of our Osage head right holders? Whatever we do, that's what I want to do. If we go here, we go there, you've got, we've got to protect the trust of the Osage head right holders. I've had that conversation with that book, and I said, "Are you claiming this trust?" And they said, "It's because it says, 'This mineral estate is reserved.'" And I said, "Because this is owned by the Osage head right holders." This, this trust is, when you pick up that quarterly report, I've, I've got another quarterly report, another Indian country, it's got my name on it. Your quarterly report says Osage tribe of Indians are--
That's right.
That's it. It doesn't say anything else. That's that question, over and over and over. "I don't know, but let's keep going." And I'm like, "Well, it says right here, the federal government thinks this is your, our trust, and we're all going to head right." So, I mean, we just continue to push, try to get, you know, your voices out there. And I appreciate some of the comments today with Chairman Redcorn, you did comment, this is, all of a sudden, this grant staring us in the face. I told Mr. Chafford, "If your past goal, and tell us what you think. Now, is this too dangerous? We're just killing." You know, that's, that's, that's what we're trying to, trying to negotiate. You guys had, years ago, you had full voice. Now it's been diminished. And you had, now we've got another group coming in here claiming it, saying it. I don't know, I don't know how they've got the right to do that. I've got other property in Indian country, and somebody walked in there and said they own part of it, I said, "Where's your name on it? I don't see it." That's what we should do here. This is a quarterly report, and there's how many people are on there, and this is it. These are the beneficiaries of that trust. So anyway, I just wanted to say that much. You know, MI3 is, is just, it's just another one opportunity, we've got more common, I should figure out a way to get us protected, and your money, that's what I'm going to try to do. So thank you all for your time and your voice, I sure wanted to hear it. Thank you, Chair.
You guys have stuff. Oh, come on. Come on. I want to thank you all, especially keeping up the fight on the lawsuit. That's very important. They impugned our SOFT, too, and they did what they did, and I do appreciate you all carrying on. Thank you.
You talking about email?
Yes, it just got written up, and New York Times getting sponsored by this government, and we're going to go fight.
Yeah, yeah.
And STED has already backed three of their projects.
Sure.
They've already built two, they're getting rid of the one at Katusa. They're into the billions of capital credits that they've been given. The White House administration, they're never going to turn over the records. And I am worried that they're going to, their final push is going to be trying to get this done by court, that they think they could possibly own it, ninety-four billion, they got some extra cash, because if it comes out after the killer of the flower moon comes out, we're going to win from here to eternity.
Yeah, I do appreciate you doing that.
Thank you, thank you, dear. With that, I'd like to entertain motion for the meeting minutes.
So move.
Second?
Say.
Second, I have motion on floor, my counsel, Second Chair Red Eagle. Seconded by Councilman Big Horn. Call for a question, please. Thank you, dear.
Councilwoman Curry.
I got it.
Councilwoman Curry. Councilman Redcorn.
Yes.
Second Chair Red Eagle.
Yes.
Councilman Rebar.
Yes.
Councilman Chappellford.
Yes.
Chairman Waller.
Yes.
Councilman Big Horn.
Yes.
Councilman Tishwall.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Yes, Ms. Big Horn, what do you want to add?
We've got one more question from the West shareholders first.
I hear.
Compact, do you know anything about a compact, that, a resolution that was passed?
By Congress.
By Congress? No, but I imagine that's going to be their next vow, is a compact contract. Every issue that I've had in executive on behalf of this council, I told them, "We want to keep it as the function, like we did the plug-in program, and we would only be entertained by a high of multi-year funding agreement that this council approves me to sign, which keeps all apart, so we'll keep it that way." No matter what they promote.
Your miss, a compact--
Ma'am, you gave me an opportunity to give out the most, best information. That has nothing to do with Osage Minerals Council, has nothing to do with a shareholder, has everything to do with the Constitution, and you just read a document that should have never got printed, because I know that my niece put in that resolution, I believe you were with her, when they stopped executive from being allowed, anyone, to do that kind of structured event like you're talking about. We are aware of it, and we'll take care of it hand and leg. Thank you all for your time and your effort.
Thank you.
Call for the question. We're good. Motion adjourned.
So move.
Second. Motion by Councilman Tishwall, second by Second Chair Red Eagle. I'm going to try to get the baby girl out of three fifty seconds. I'm going to kill me.
Councilman Redcorn.
Yes.
Second Chair Red Eagle.
Yes.
Councilman Rebar.
Yes.
Councilman Chappellford.
Oh, what?
Chairman Waller.
Hi.
What?
Councilman Big Horn.
Yeah. Yeah, yeah.
After what you say.
Japanese, yes.
No, it's, I'm saying, always we agree.
I thought I heard you say hi.
Thank you. No, I'm not going off load. No, uh, I'm not going off loads. I'm going off of the older ones. That's how they had it in there. It's not really the.